Welcome. At this regularly scheduled meeting of the State Department of Education come to order, the first quarter of business is to approve the agenda as seen on the screen. The motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And second item is to approve the minutes that were distributed in advance. Motion to approve this? Second? On favor?
Aye.
Dr. Preven?
Right. We have few recognitions, as you can tell. Thank you all for coming today on a very, very miserable day outside. It's good to be alive, so I took that. So our first group is from Cabo Heights, Dr. Lisa Huntsberger. And your team, come on down. Tonight, we have with Dr. Huntsberger, Jason Bostic, assistant principal. And then, teaching team, Erica Parnas here, Courtney McKinney, Julie Green, Julie Hudson, and Perkins, me, Mary. Not everybody.
Yeah, we have two that weren't able to make it.
But this is a team that is a part of a group that started two years ago, I believe, in Hope Academy's work on a character program. And this is part of their Safe and Happy Heights work that they've been doing. And I'm going to ask Dr. Huntsberger just to talk about what they've been doing in general, but they were recently recognized as a state school of character by character.org, I believe, is a national consortium of schools that are doing this type of work. And this is very unusual to have a school this early in the process to get this award. It is an acknowledgement of really fine work and character development. It's a state requirement, but our folks look beyond state requirements. That's just sort of a baseline and really take it to the extra mile. And that's what this group has done. So congratulations, Dr. Huntsberger and team. I'd like for you to tell us what you've been doing.
Yeah.
With Safe and Happy Heights.
Sure, sure. So we, yeah, so Safe and Happy Heights is really kind of what we say around our school for be safe, be respectful, and be your best. And then through the Hope Academy and partnership with Sanford, we have done a lot of work to really just refine our core values and think about how we can embed character into all the work that we do. And we talk about at our school that we don't want to raise just smart kids, because our kids are smart, we want to raise kind kids too, and we want to ensure that they are going the extra mile to be empathetic and collaborative and really build on those soft skills that we talk about. They're not just soft skills, they're really essential skills in the work world today. So this team has really helped lead the way in that. So there are 11 principles in character.org that you look at to include things like service learning and a caring community in your school. And each of those, we were evaluated on and we talk about it as a group, like how are we doing in that area and what can we do to enhance that area of our school? And so this team really did a lot of work. For those of you who've done national boards, it's a very rigorous process, and we kind of did that for our school in the area of character. And it's really a journey for us. There's lots of things that we can continue to grow in. It's been a learning process, but without this team, we would not have been able to do this good work. So we're really proud and excited to be recognized in this way.
Board members, each of our schools this year have started their round one west in Cabo Heights during the year two of Hope Academy. They made it to Sanford University. I believe it's quarterly, you guys actually do this work. But the work's going on all year long, but this is just a part of that group of Hope Academy. I'm proud to see all of this taking place at a large level systemically. It's part of, I think, our second goal, to provide social emotional supports in the best way we can for our students. So comments you guys would like to make about the program itself? Welcome.
I was going to say, I teach good grade. Sorry. See, we're all so eager. But I teach fifth, and I've seen a big difference in the kids as far as, like we said, behavior plans, and that has greatly minimized, just because it's an expectation and it's clearly communicated. So I've seen a big difference in that way.
I was just going to say that clear expectations, everyone knows, we use a lot of the same language. It helps, I mean, I'm kind of in everyone's classroom, so it gives a good way to communicate that way. Just like, for one example, the other day, we were at carpool, I haven't done that in a while, because we, and it was like, amazing. I was so, because they all were on ZD road, they had this clear expectation, they knew exactly, it was like efficient, and so it makes every aspect of the school run so much better.
So we are Heights heroes, here to save the day. Time to save time.
Can you teach us?
I got four bands left.
Next, the highlight of the evening always is recognizing our students and our staff, and so we get to do both tonight. So I've got several that I want to recognize. We want to do this by introducing the students that are here and show you their artwork. These are the winners of the superintendent's art contest. And we have gone through a, what I'd say is a pretty rigorous process to get to this point. There's a lot of art submitted as part of this annual contest, and then we narrowed it down to the ones that won our categories, and they were all submitted to the state. And all of this artwork is actually in the state, wherever that is right now, somewhere away from here after it's been judged. So we can start with the first one, is that right, Whit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Akeem Bassu, first grader at Vestavia West. Hello, did I say your name correctly? Pretty close. Is that yours? Congratulations. Stay up here with us, okay? All right. And from, at fifth grader at Vestavia West is Spencer Kyle. This is called Moonlit Tree Silhouette. Is that you? That's good. Akeem's was called Hello, Mr. Theobald, too, right? Did I get that right? Okay. Come on this way, just a little bit. Okay. Another fifth grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary East is Ollie Wilson. And this is Lion's Eye. Can you believe this?
Ollie was the name of the child.
That's just, hello, Michelle.
Hello.
I'm just amazed, fifth grader. All right, fourth grader, Vestavia Hills Elementary East, Reese Mallett. And this is called Pumpkin. That's really good. And there are, students drew a lot of these, I think, in sharp, so I remember seeing a lot of pumpkins, a lot of the same ones. And so they put their unique spin on each of them.
Each one is unique.
Yeah. This pumpkin really stood out. Very good. All right. From Vestavia Hills Elementary Liberty Park, Rena Nakazawa. This is called The Farm. Fifth grader from Vestavia Hills Elementary Liberty Park, Charlotte Poole. This is called Melt. Cool. That's just amazing. All right. From Vestavia Hills Elementary Cabo Heights, fifth grader Ruth Graham. This is called Bird's Eye New Cityscape. Third grader Vestavia Hills Elementary Cabo Heights is Megan Marin. This is called Pumpkin in Shell. Were we doing these in the fall? All right. Fifth grader Vestavia Hills Elementary Dolly Ridge, Baker Huntley. This is called A Self Portrait. I'd say you did a pretty good job. Nice work. All right. And let's see. Fifth grader Vestavia Hills Elementary Dolly Ridge, Connor Morehouse, A Self Portrait. There's Connor. That's good. That's great. All right. Senior Vestavia Hills High School, Abby Fowler. This is a photograph. Abby, is this a photograph of you?
Yes.
Probably not. This is called A Photograph, right?
Um, it's called Into the Light.
Excellent. All right. Senior Vestavia Hills High School, Dipshani Argo Wall. I didn't do well, did I?
To be honest, you put you really close.
Okay, all right. That's beautiful. Is that local, you took that?
Yes, sir, it's at Royal Wood Park.
All right. All right. Junior Vestavia Hills High School, Raely, got it here. It's another photograph. There she comes. All right. Seventh grader at Positz Middle School, Zoya Alice A. This is called Melon Turtle. Really good. Seventh grader at Positz Middle School, Chloe McCormick, Journey of Peace. Chloe, it's beautiful. You probably noticed a lot of different types of art, and I'm not even going to attempt to try to explain what they are, but there's a lot of different variations of what they have done, which made it so much fun to look at. All right. Seventh grader at Positz, Alex Pepke. This is called A Rainbow of Insecurities. All right. Eighth grader at Liberty Park Middle, Ayla Holland. It's called Madeline. And seventh grader at Liberty Park Middle, Alisa Xavier. This is called Flourishing. And eighth grader at Liberty Park Middle School is my Humate, Humata, Ravakumar. Did I get pretty close?
Not many.
Okay. You have a beautiful name, and that's a beautiful picture. Childy beauty. Childy beauty. All right. Now, our last person I wanted to introduce is the sixth grader at Positz Middle School, Avery Hatterton. Avery, come on up, where are you? All right, Avery. This is your portrait, it's called Fox on Guard. And they're all beautiful, and I wanted to make sure you knew this about Avery, this picture is a state champion picture. She was awarded a state championship in her category, fifth in the sixth grade, is that right? All right, that's fantastic. Congratulations to all of you. We have some of our art teachers with us tonight. Anything you'd like to say for our artists?
Well, they were chosen out of millions and millions of students, so this is, these are the ones that had some very nice pictures, worked very hard, so.
I want to share with you, Dr. Cooper, who's standing back there in the back in his dress and tie, is the person who put all this together and brought it from the teachers who assembled it and brought it to us and guided to me where we could take a look at it. And I was just blown away with your work. So congratulations, thank you, Dr. Cooper, thank you, teachers, for doing this, and guys, thank you for sharing your talents with us. Congratulations. Now, we're finished up, so you can stay for the meeting, I love for you two, but if you have homework to do or things you need to do otherwise, you can exit.
I've got their pictures, so I can.
Everybody in some financial statement?
Good afternoon. I have provided the January 2020 financial statements and check register for your review. As of January 2020, we have collected 46% of our total budgeted revenues, and this is compared to 43% in the prior year. The increase this year to date is from property tax revenues. We received about 3% more than we did last year this time. We're still tracking at the end of February with about a 3% increase right now as well. So I hope that'll be better news next month. Our expenditures for January 2020 are at 37% of budget. We were at 35% at the state last year, and the reason for the increase this year is because we made our 2019 warrant payment in January. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of January 31st, 2020.
Board members, I recommend approval of the financial statement for January 2020.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Sub move. Second?
Second.
Any questions? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, consent items. I recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state overnight field trips and disposal of property.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
One thing I'll note on there for you is we, the people, is going to the national competition, and it won't surprise you that they are state champions. So that is a national competition, I'll look forward to sharing how they do in a couple of months with you. All right. Under business item A, I recommend the board approve the 2021 parent and student handbook as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, consent items. I recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state overnight field trips and disposal of property.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
One thing I'll note on there for you is we, the people, is going to the national competition, and it won't surprise you that they are state champions. So that is a national competition, I'll look forward to sharing how they do in a couple of months with you. All right. Under business item A, I recommend the board approve the 2021 parent and student handbook as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
One thing I'll note on there for you is we, the people, is going to the national competition, and it won't surprise you that they are state champions. So that is a national competition, I'll look forward to sharing how they do in a couple of months with you. All right. Under business item A, I recommend the board approve the 2021 parent and student handbook as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Questions, commentary? Standard every year?
Yeah, and we're doing it earlier this year, Dr. Rann, if you don't mind, just a little explanation on that.
Sure. We wanted to make sure that we could include that in our online registration packet, and so since that will begin soon, we wanted to have it approved so it could be there so we could get our electronic signatures and know that every parent who registered a child in our district had the information.
Additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, I recommend the board approve Schneider Electric to complete an investment-grade audit on the Vestavia Hills City Schools facilities.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Commentary?
I would like to comment about this. When we start this process, there is a energy law effectively that allows boards to enter into contracts with energy savings or energy service providers, ESCOs, that what they do basically is put sets of projects together, and they guarantee savings as it relates to things such as lighting, heating and air, building envelope, anything like that that can result in savings for the system. So we do not have to necessarily follow a bid law and getting contractor, but we do have to follow a process through RFP. And so in the fall, Rick Lathan and Sean Conla started an RFP process for us, and we gathered, and we got two responses from the RFP. One was from Schneider, and one was from Train. And then a committee that I was a part of, as were other parts of the team, members of the team, looked at the two submittals and their criteria that the law describes that we have to look at in terms of what is submitted to us. And we arrive at a conclusion to bring to the board to recommend. And our conclusion with Schneider was the capable company, very capable in doing the work that we would like to consider. Before that got to us, they did a preliminary audit to give us a general idea of projects that we could do that would be energy savings type projects. And Schneider has a wide breadth of experience in doing this type of work, and so the first step in the process is for them to do a more detailed audit, what they call an investment-grade audit. And so for, I believe, the next four to six months, Schneider will be on our campuses looking at all the details of our utilities and our infrastructure to determine ways that we can upgrade our facilities and save money with long-term energy. And so I look forward to doing this. This is the first step in the process. And so the team that we've been working with is here tonight, Kyle Keith is back there, and Todd Smith. And I've known these guys for several years, they've done a lot of work in schools throughout the state and nationally, in fact. So I would refer them, and they're going to start the ball rolling as soon as you give an agreement to it. What this does is obligates you only to the audit portion. Once that is completed, we will determine then if we want to proceed with projects or a portion of the projects or none at all. And so we'll make that determination when they come back to us. But you can look forward to hearing much more from these guys, because when it gets to that point, we're going to turn the microphone over to them and ask them to talk to us about it. So any comments you guys want to add to that? Kyle, Todd?
We'd just like to say thank you very much. We've been strong partners of Alabama K-12 for really the last 15 years, hence our prior relationship with lots of the folks. We've seen some of y'all at school board conferences, and absolute pleasure to be working with you. Our office is just a couple miles down the road off Lake Shore, so this is truly home for us. We've worked with about a third of the systems in the state, and we're so excited to have the opportunity to do some really wonderful things here. As, you know, we talked about our breadth really does expand into some pretty unique areas, and we think we have some really good ideas for your school system here, so we're excited to see what unfolds.
With the age of some of our buildings, I would think there's lots of opportunities.
There is. In fact, there's a general idea, initial audits of what savings can be, but it's significant. We know that anywhere from changing lights, changing air conditioning systems that are aged, roofing systems, some things related to IT, possibly to security, there are a lot of areas that we can explore that could be a really good move for us. And honestly, the board has been so consumed with new construction the last five years that we're about to be out of that window, that we're able to begin to look at our facilities that we have and how do we bring them back to modernize them.
So many of our facilities now are not, you know, eight to five kind of facilities in there.
That's right.
All weekend, you drive past and stuff going on and stuff, so sure. Yeah, the usage of them has changed a whole lot.
If you're a neighbor to a school, particularly a high school, you can appreciate that it's pretty much a year-round.
That's right. All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Item C, recommend the board approve change order number 14 with Blaylock Building Company and the amount of $58,668 for renovations for a new middle school, package B, building additions and renovations.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Questions, commentary?
Okay. Since we're adding money, this one's Dr. Mark's.
That's right. When we're saving money, it's you.
Going back to that window of new construction. There was a significant deduct on this project, but that was due to, in January, the Board of Education, if you recall, approved a joint agreement with the city for paving work. And so we received a deduct on that from Blaylock, who's the GC on site there at Berry. Just a couple of items to finish up that we had CORs on for this change order 14, but we're primarily focused on punch lists now over on the Berry campus, so it's nice to see that window's fully closed.
Yeah, some of the parts of this particular documents, you saw one of them in particular has to do with some insulation issues with the bricks, so there's a lot of point in that existing brick, that's a large amount, one of the jobs. One of those has to do with ADA compliant swing. Of course, special needs. Yeah, one of you asked me a question about that, so there's some significant costs in making sure the infrastructure of that is in place. So you get the idea when you look at all those.
We wanted to make sure one was for receptacles, we wanted to make sure there was adequate electricity for the teachers in each one of the classrooms, so that was a, and that as well.
Any questions on that? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, I recommend the board approve the owner architect agreement between Lathan Associates and the board in the amount of $300,000 for renovation for a new middle school, package F, new track surface as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I do want to tell you that 300,000 is not what we're paying Lathan, it's the budget amount for the project. But do bear in mind that this is not something that's in our current capital plan, but we want to get the design prepared for it. The track at Berry is going to be a great addition to the, to the system, but it is an aged facility, and that's one of those areas that was not part of our work. So I do know that we'll have to do some work on the asphalt and the surface itself. So we want to go ahead and get the design ready, and when the funds are available, be able to do.
We put the budget number in our pocket, basically.
Yeah.
Any questions?
What surface material are we looking at?
One that makes people run slower.
Yeah.
Down. Yeah. Same as this there? Asphalt or is it?
That'd be part of the design, right? We've looked at a couple. We met, we met with someone out there in, what would you say, a couple weeks ago?
We, yes, sir.
And so looking at different variations, and some of that will be driven by cost.
Maybe rug rust of some sort, I believe.
Okay.
No, we have a high, high-grade one at the high school, would not likely be that level, but it would be something on top of the asphalt.
Right. Yeah.
Rubber rust, it's a rubber rust paint, a little buckle or each.
Did we go on that?
Yeah.
No. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, I recommend the board approve the owner architect agreement between Lathan Associates Architects BC and the board in the amount of $115,000 for field restoration and improvements for Vestavia Hills Elementary Dolly Ridge as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Thank you.
Is the football field in the back?
It is. This is, this is in our capital plan, a budget to do, it's in our capital plan this year to do a project. And we wanted to give some time, I think, to get settled onto that field after construction. There are things that we're aware of on the field that we probably wouldn't have been had they not gotten out there. We have some drainage issues on that field, but it needs a new surface, and it's a great space, and we can't have it laying there without being used. So because of our shared agreement, it ultimately will get shared use with the city as well, so that's a possibility.
If we had drainage issues, we definitely found out.
We didn't, we do now.
That's right. Any other questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, I recommend the board approve the owner architect agreement with Lathan Associates Architect BC and the board in the amount of $100,000 for demolition and replacement of canopy for Vestavia Hills Elementary Dolly Ridge as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
And they didn't run carpool at Dolly Ridge before, so it was pretty much a canopy, right?
That's right, that's right. And the one that's there, it's very large, but it's, it doesn't cover the length of what the car line is. And I would tell you that a key to making that car line work has been the number of stacks we can get, and that helps the issue on Dolly Ridge, so this is an important thing. It's not in our capital plan, it's not part of our current capital plan, but it'll be something we'll be looking to do as soon as we're able to. It will help the car situation. You know, candidly, a lot of our folks, when it's raining, it's wet, and that canopy doesn't get it for all of our schools, but this particular case is just a length issue of getting all of our kids underneath, so we'll start designing that.
Yep. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, I recommend the board approve the lease purchase agreement for three buses with capital one.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
I'd like for you to hear a couple of perspectives. One is that the amount of the buses are purchased, and we did that without bids. So Dr. Mark, if you could just explain how that, how we've arrived at these three buses?
Sure. So in December, the Board of Education approved the purchase of an A-class bus and rolled out what the plan was and looking to replenish our fleet. So we've been working with several of the bus companies here in the area. Bluebird uses Sourcewell, which is a joint purchasing cooperative, which we're able to take advantage of, and the pricing was such that we wanted to go in that direction. We are looking at this time at purchasing two D-class buses, which will take the place[1649.83] of two buses we currently have that are D class, that's an eighty passenger bus. And then we'd also like to purchase a C class bus with a lift. And so what we'll do is we will, that will take the place of a current D class bus that has a lift. And so I know Mike Varner, our transportation coordinator, has been working with a source that will purchase those old buses from the system, but utilizing the Sourcewell joint purchasing cooperative, we're able to purchase these buses minus the.
Mr. Anderson, A and D.
The A is your smaller bus, special needs bus.
Okay.
And the D is your pusher, flat nose bus.
Got it.
So difference between a smaller bus and an A.
Ninety passenger, D ninety passenger?
Eighty passenger.
And C is how much, Mr. Varner?
C is a twenty passenger, three to a C T.
Okay.
I'm sorry, C. C class will be a thirty passenger, with which we'll equip eight classes of twenty passenger, the one we purchased earlier.
I'm not up on my bus class. I forgot my flashcards.
Two of these, well, part of this whole equipment renewal plan that we've got in place is to also accommodate for the movement of freshmen, back to the freshmen running up this to the high school. So two of these get, are made into part of that as well.
The two D class buses will purchase or replace these two oh six models, and that's what we use to transport that shuttle between main campus and freshman campus.
Yeah, and we knew that was going to be, there was going to be some which is a consequence of that, yeah.
Right. So the other, the other part of this, which is the recommendation part, is the lease purchase part. So we wanted to have this round, just talk to you through that, how we arrived at this.
Yeah, so we did a R F P for the lease financing. We got four bids back, and capital one offered the lowest interest rate. And our annual lease payments will be paid back through our equipment renewal funds. Every year we get about forty thousand right now, and that's going to make the lease payments on these buses.
Very good. And the more buses we can keep within ten years that run our route, the more dollars we get from the state, which helps us with these payments. So it's a good thing.
Questions?
Yeah.
That is correct. Yes, this is largely transportation for field trips, for freshman campus, but no, it is no, it is no growth of any routes for school children in the system.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Item A, personnel, I recommend the board approve the personal actions as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
Questions? No? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Cooper, who is with us, Dr. Antonio Cooper, who you've met, is part of the day doing Superintendent Art Show competition, part of the day, career technical education. And I want, this is the month that nationally we celebrate career technical education, and I want to highlight this here as part of our first goal in our strategic plan, Dr. Cooper, you can give a presentation on career pathways, some good things to talk about.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm excited to say the least. First and foremost, I want to give all the credit to Dr. Burgess and his administrative team and the C T E teachers, because they did a lot of the heavy lifting. I just had a lot of meetings with them and pretty much just told them what our options were and the things that we could possibly do with our students, and they were all on board on providing these opportunities that I present with you all today. And in staying with our strategic plan goals, we focusing mainly on strategic plan goal number one, focusing on the teaching and learning of everything. And when we were looking at our C T E pathways at the high school, we trying to stay with our mission of learning with our limits, we noticed that we had a few challenges that were in the way, that were kind of hindering us or holding us back per se. And so the main two were career prep A and career prep B and student concerns. Probably the, well, the issue that we had or limit we had with career prep A and career prep B, with the high school being the sheer size that it is, over two thousand students, it takes a lot of teachers to teach that high school graduation requirement. And so when we ran our numbers, we found out that out of the eleven hundred students that take career tech classes, five hundred and fifty of those students were in career prep A and career prep B. And what they did for our teachers is it significantly limited the amount of actual pathway course offerings that they could offer the students before they left the high school to go pursue their careers in college and or in the professional realm. And so what we decided to do was to write a career prep waiver submitted to the State Department of Education, to where we would still give the students that opportunity to satisfy their graduation requirement, but also we wanted to increase the amount of course offerings and options for the students to choose, to explore while they're in high school, while it's free, instead of going to colleges to realize this may not be what I want to major in or do for the rest of my life, and then they're in their parents' pocket at that time, or they're burning through their scholarship money that they could apply towards what it is that they wanted to do. So that was the whole goal of this. So by getting career prep A waiver, what we are requesting for the state to give us approval to do is embed career prep A in all of our foundational C T E pathways. And by that, the teachers will continue to teach and introduce the students to the pathways of their choice, and they'll also get those career prep A components completed in that course. Career prep B will be offered their senior year in economics. Every senior takes it, so we'll just embed those standards into that course, and there's no extra course offering out of the way. And that way, we can get those five hundred and fifty students in something that they're actually interested, or think they're interested in, to find out all the nuances of the pathway. And the student concerns.
Dr. Cooper, does that take career prep A out of the coursework for next year? Like, is it not A? I know the ninth graders can't take it.
It's embedded. Well, we will have at least one or two.
Just some catch up.
We'll offer a handful of sections for those tenth through twelfth graders who have not had it yet and will need it.
It should be one year.
But yet haven't been enough foundational. Correct.
And then I've seen the embedded list.
Should be one year, yeah.
Perfect.
And then we'll leave one for students that transfer in, quite possibly that are up a classroom. We don't want to leave them out there. The other piece was the student concerns. In meeting with the C T E teachers, they told us several students that come to them and say, hey, the courses you teach is what I want to major in, but I need to focus on getting my GPA to where I would like for it to be upon graduation. So therefore, I can't take any of the classes that you're offering, I have to take them in college. And so they were not going up there to take those classes. High school is that opportunity for those students to actually go into it and see if it's what they want, and to be able to be connected with business and industry in a safe environment, where they're not gambling on anything, living your, wasting time in their lives, pretty much. So what we decided to do was look at the honor points, and once again, kudos to Dr. Burgess and his administrative team. They called Dr. Rainey himself to the table to look at the options, to level playing field based off of the honor points that were in the other subject areas, fine arts, foreign language, and things of that nature. And so we looked at all of our pathways, and right now, we have six at the high school. We have drafting technology, health science, information technology, finance, marketing, and business media. And out of those six pathways, we only had one course that garnered an honor point, and that was A P Computer Science Principles. So after meeting with the administrative team, talking to our C T E teachers, and just looking at what we were doing at the high school in previous years and other areas, we've been able to add a significant amount of courses that matched the same criteria in the other, fine arts and foreign languages to be offered. So the entrepreneurship course, I have it marked for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, because there is a specific program that we would like to use, and so we have to allocate some funds to be able to purchase that course, to be able to teach that the way that we want it to be taught, the way that we feel like our students will benefit the most from. And in that course, they'll go through several components of the lesson to where they'll learn how to start their own business. In fact, they'll be able to start their own business in that class while they're still students at Stavey Hills High School, and actually have people come in and invest. And so we would like to do that the right way, so that'll be a slow build, so we'll get to that in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two. All right, so this is our graphic, and this is the goal of what it is that we want to do. We want to be able to take our students from elementary school to their careers. And by doing so, we want to, especially for elementary schools, we know their jobs aren't created yet, so we want to start working with them to make them as well-rounded as possible through the world of STEM, hands-on learning, computer science, and things of that nature. In middle school, we want to do the same thing. And in high school, we ultimately want to prepare them for their career. If college, like the majority of our graduates go to college, if that's what it is that they want to do, we want to make sure that they're more prepared to go into what they know is what they want to do as far as the nine and five is concerned. And we want to be able to credential those in the professional industry with credentials to have them available for a job as soon as they graduate high school, should they choose to take a gap year, or if they feel like college is just not for me, I want to go and work first. So we want to provide all of those options. And so you all have these graphics in your own documentation, but just to sum it all up, we just talked about the cluster and the actual pathway that we'll have at the high school. So in health science, we'll have sports medicine pathway, and we listed the careers for the students to see, hey, is this the ball field that I want to play in, and the degrees for those careers. And in all of our pathways, we wanted to make sure that we offer careers that were for a two-year, four-year degree, specialist, a doctoral degree, and a high school diploma with the right credential. So you'll notice in all of the slides from this point on, that I have a section where there's gold writing, and those are the courses that will garner an honors point. And so the other beautiful part about all of our pathways is that, hey, I'm a freshman or I'm a sophomore, well, for this case, Foundations of Health Science is a sophomore-level course. I think I want to do this. You go into the class, you satisfy your career prep A graduation requirement, and you decide, hey, health science is not for me. You're not locked in. You have the freedom to choose to join in any other pathway that you would like for future references. And our C T E teachers work very closely together, and they talk, so they can be able to tell you about all the programs that we have available at the high school.
And you're basically not limited by year, right? I mean, ten through twelve, you can pick it up at any time?
Yes. Now, this health sciences, that first class is at the main campus.
Okay.
And we, we would prefer for that to be a sophomore-level class, because if you want to truly follow the pathway, that last year's an internship. And you're, you're a senior at that time, you, you can actually get into the field seventeen, eighteen years old and get that real experience. But for the rest of them, yes. All right, so in our business management and administrative, administration pathway, we have our business media, and there are several careers in there the same way, some of them post-secondary, some of them just getting your credentials in high school through Mrs. Jones, who's in the crowd today. And so these are the courses for that one. And it's pretty much flushed out. You can jump in and jump out when you want to, and if it's your thing, then you, by all means, you continue on. And what I've been working on, with the blessing of Dr. Freeman and Dr. Rainey, is getting partnerships, so that our students not only get this great high-level education, but we want to bring in business and industry and take them there so that they can make sure it is, this is what they want to do. So we reached out to all of our news media outlets, and right now, we're working closely with Rick Carley to come in and speak with the group, and get our students to actually go to the studio to see more about the media, media realm. So in marketing, we have the marketing pathway, and here are the trajectories for that. Jump in and jump out, we want to give them as much choice as possible. Thank you all for approving internet marketing and entrepreneurship at our last board meeting. All of those classes are making. Entrepreneurship, of course, not, because we want to wait a year, but internet marketing, all of the courses that we added are actually making, so that's awesome, awesome news. And in our marketing partnerships, along with the news media outlets, we've reached out to American First Federal Credit Union, and they're actually going to provide an avenue for our seniors, our students that go throughout this pathway, their senior year for workplace learning, they'll be able to do a marketing internship at the bank in their main branch downtown. They'll also allow our students to do an accounting internship, as well as an information technology internship. And if we have a student that went through their pathway, no matter what it was, and they're not sure what they want to do, American First Federal will allow us to do a member services pathway, where the students are actually be able to do their internship at the bank right here by C V S. So that's a new partnership that we've just developed, and they'll actually come in and teach personal finance lessons in the classroom and things of that nature throughout the school year. And so this is our finance pathway, and two different tracks. And we want to be able to, I want to go back to this screen as far as the careers are concerned, we have bookkeeper, accounting clerk, and cashier. We want to make sure that we're providing credentials that industry actually wants and needs right now for our students to be able to even get those jobs, even if it's over the summertime. And once again, you see the goal. So in architecture, architecture and construction, we have the drafting and design technology pathway, it's one of our most popular ones. The freshmen that have signed up for this course has made us rethink how we're going to teach it next year because of the sheer amount, which is exciting, but that's the pathway for that. And students can actually choose between two. They can either go into the engineering pathway or the architecture pathway. And like I said before, if they choose engineering and realize, I want to go into architecture, it's just as simple as, okay, I want to go and start taking these courses. The newest one that we're trying to develop and go as slow as we can, with the passage of the new Perkins Five Federal Programs, Programs Dolls for Career Technical Education, they wrote in that they're no longer going to fund dead pathways. And as it stands right now, the Stavey Hills City School System, we have a pathway that dies in eighth grade, and that's in the world of family and consumer sciences. The students take those classes, six, seven, and eighth grade, and if their lights are turned on, we don't have any reform currently as it stands. So we'd be remiss if we didn't provide those opportunities for them. But we don't want to force them to do anything that they don't want to do, so we're going to let them choose. So what we decided to do was just put all of the possible pathways that they could choose from, which is lodging, recreation, travel, and tourism, restaurant and food, beverage services, food wellness and dietetics, as well as interior design and real estate design. And so what we decided to do was offer two foundational courses that match the majority of these pathways, so that once they take those courses and we decide on what it is based off of what the survey information shows, they'll have credit in that pathway with these courses that they took. And so the two classes that we are planning on doing is event planning and hospitality and tourism, and those classes have taken off. They are quite full, to say the least, as far as our upcoming freshmen. We've partnered with Surla Taub, the head chef has actually come in, and she's, she's well-versed in all of those fields, and she's helping us slowly build this program out the right way. The reason we went with them is because we want to know what the industry wants, and a lot of the things that she's talking to us about are things that they wish they would have coming out of college, and so she's going to help us infuse those into our program whatever it is that we choose. Some additional pathways we have, because we want to have options for all two thousand-plus students that we have at the high school, we currently have the Academy of Craft Training, so if a student wants to get into the hands-on building, or H VAC work, or electrical work, they actually get to go there their junior and senior year. They fill out the application and actually go and interview at the Academy of Craft Training and just continue through the program. A new partnership that we have is with the high school Ready to Work powered by the Only Group. Now, this course will be designed for that student that has made it to their senior year, and they still don't know what it is that they want to do. So the Only Group will come in, they have a complete year's work curriculum, and they'll take the students on field trips to all of the business, local business and industry in Birmingham, Jackson County area. Those students will get to walk through those areas, interview, and find out more information about that. If the students successfully meet all of the course requirements, they'll actually leave that course with a ready-to-work certification, and they will have one credit, one credit class that they can take at any junior college, community college in the state. So we want to provide that opportunity to those students. All right, so for information and technology, computer science, Alabama Act two thousand nineteen dash three eighty-nine has come up with a few things that we have to start implementing starting twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, no, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. One of which is that we needed to offer some computer science courses that will be able to count as a fourth-year math, or a third or fourth-year science. And so looking at our pathways for computer science on next year, we noticed that we already had one of the courses, which was A P Computer Science Principles. Well, we wanted to bolster that, and we noticed that it was another course that was on the list that was very attractive, is actually one of the most popular high school elective courses out to date, and that's the cybersecurity. And it was just in great timing, we were going through a cybersecurity audit, so we felt like that would be a great class for our students, and we're getting great requests for that course as well at the high school. So that's pretty exciting to have that course. And we're working with SHIPT to come in and provide just knowledge for our students, and we want to do an internship through SHIPT, but that's a competitive internship, so if we can get them here and talking to us as much as possible, we think we'd have a better opportunity to get into that program. So that's the cybersecurity and computer science for the high school. The act also requires for us to offer computer science courses in the middle school during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So what we decided to do was get a little proactive. We filled out an Alabama Computer Initiative, Computer Programming Initiative grant, and we received it for twenty-five thousand dollars to train our teachers in middle school on the computer science for innovators and makers, to be able to offer and to fall. So that'll be a new course at the middle school, and our teachers will be trained on teaching that course, will also open it up for other schools outside of the system to come to our location and get trained. It'll be at the new Posits Campus this, in July.
Dr. Cooper, people signed up for the cybersecurity class?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you write that they, I mean, we've made all of our good lectures?
We have, yeah. Very popular.
We wanted to be careful and make sure we offer what they were going to be interested in and what we can continue to build. We didn't just want to throw a lot of stuff at the wall to see what we're actually making. Now, we wanted to make meaning of it and make sure that it's in the hot forty jobs and careers that are in Jackson County, wanted to make sure it was in line with that. So these are our pathways at the middle school. As it currently stands, we only have this bottom piece, which is family and consumer science, but moving forward, you'll notice that we have future options for twenty twenty-one and beyond. We're looking at adding app creators, medical detectors, and designing modeling, just to name a few, over the next three years, for a slow build out to make sure we're doing it correctly. And like that first graphic, we're reaching our hand through the high school all the way to elementary. So once we get to middle school onboard, we're going down into elementary and seeing what we can do to be able to help build that there. So as far as our next steps are concerned, is to develop and strengthen partnerships with local business and industry, um, explore inviting dual enrollment opportunities with local post-secondary institutions, and expose and educate our elementary students to careers of the future. So that's our work in a nutshell. You all have any questions?
I'd like to say, because I sat on strategic planning, and I, this fulfills every comment we uttered in strategic planning. So I'm so excited to see the partnerships, because we have a community of vast knowledge in all of these. So I mean, that, then now that we've made them, I'm super impressed with what you've been able to do and offer to our kids, um, this quickly. I'm really impressed.
You all approve the class?
Y'all created.
No, but I, I mean, I love, I love this, because I think, you know, um, I mean, I'm forty-seven, I still don't want to, what I want to do when I grow up necessarily, right? So I mean, I think there's that sense that we send students off at eighteen, at least when I was coming up, and all, you know, taking four years of this and four years of that. But I had no exposure to, like, what are the actual jobs out there? And to your point, I mean, it's a whole lot better to be doing it this, where it's free, versus, you know, you get three years into, like, man, I really don't like this major that I chose. And now you kind of have to shake that sketch and start over. So the fact that you can introduce students to all these different kind of, hey, you don't even know what the, I don't know, when I was a high school, I had no idea what the set of even possible jobs out there were. Instead of kind of say, hey, here's some jobs and here's some classes that top to those, I think that is really equipping them for future success, what am I walking?
Such a better employee. When I was an engineer, I didn't take an engineering class. I was a sophomore in college. And Dr. Brooks is so tired of me being in his drafting class. I mean, it's great if you could, I mean, you can take that stuff here and learn. You're a better employer, you're a college student.
Yeah. Well, you get a perfect example. We get V, some VNN sitting over here. And, uh, Thomas, Thomas, who'll be on air tomorrow morning, so. But, uh, Morgan and Dr. Burgess have, I mean, they've jumped on board, Dr. Freeman, since he's rolled in. Um, you know, they're in front of a camera and every day broadcasting to the school, and it's just hands-on experience. Thomas was my partner for one year of doing the, uh, football broadcast.
Highlight of my high school.
And then, uh, and I appreciate all the emails saying that the, uh, uh, audience went way up this year. But no, seriously, if you, if you ever get an opportunity, uh, Dr. Burgess may, he'll hate me for this, because it's a security thing, but if you get a chance to get up in the press box, this is a setup like you won't believe is around. And I mean, young men, young ladies, they're flying around on boards and, and iPads and phones and things. And, you know, I'm, I'm still with a can and a string trying, trying to talk into something.
Bullet titers, I think.
And that's it. I mean, I, you know, I don't punch a button, because I'll burn something up. And they're over there just flying around doing stuff. And it's, I mean, it's amazing, the talent. And, and I mean, this is just another great opportunity in so many different areas for the exact same thing.
The trick here is communication, right? This has to be mass scale to our parents, so that they understand these options are available for. And they must, I mean, we're getting the word out somehow, because we're making our electives in full force. But just a continual, maybe here's what you have, here's what we can take. Because I don't know the best way to do that, and not everybody reads everything. But that, that would be my takeaway, is just make sure we get this out in mass force to our community, so they know, or other business partners, so they know they are back asking, now, hey, can we partner? We want your, your interns.
And will some of these electives be at the middle school this year, too?
Some are already in place. They've been there for two years. Uh, it's just that now it's in more streamlined process. But we kind of began trying to feed these pathways about two years ago, so that kids get, you know, some initial exposure. But now we're taking it up a whole other level.
Cool. Segue into, perfect, Mr. Vindal, for the next piece. Uh, Mrs. Jones and the VNN and Rebel Nation Sports Network students worked on a nice piece that, uh, we want to show you all. But first, she's giving me something that I have to read, or I can't go on the third floor. So, um, Vestade News Network is a student-led class responsible for creating the morning news broadcast each morning at Vestade Hills High School, as well as filming various events around campus. This year's VNN staff includes twelve students in grades eleven and twelve. Over the past two years, we have expanded the sports broadcasting program, Rebel Nation Sports Network, into also being a primarily student-run program. The students film, switch, run the scoreboard, announce, and edit two simultaneous broadcasts on both the NFHS Network as well as on YouTube Live. These students conduct themselves in a professional manner and are an excellent representation of Vestade Hills High School. The seniors in VNN are Edie Anthony, uh, Claire Christie, Laurie Cunningham, Pat Latham, Lily Kate Prather, Ainsley Schultz, and Thomas Wade. They will be missed next year.
I'm not advertising everyone.
Mrs. Jones would like to personally recognize one senior in particular, Thomas Wade. I guess that's why he stayed behind. Uh, Thomas had expressed his interest to her in being a sports anchor as his career after college. He had the opportunity as a junior to take over as co-anchor for Friday night football games with Mr. Steve Vindal. Beginning in the fall of two thousand nineteen, Thomas has been the lead anchor with other Rebel Nation students, Graham Duncan, Marshall James Newsom, John Michael Staxny, and Cole Spain serving as co-anchors. This year, we will have fully expanded into producing streams from multiple sports at Vestade Hills High School. These include basketball, baseball, soccer, and volleyball. Thomas has been a major factor in being able to cover so many sporting events so seamlessly throughout the school year. We appreciate Thomas's dedication to VNN and the Rebel Nation Sports Network, and can't wait to see where his future takes him.
I do want to say I'm very proud of Thomas, because I was always very vocal about the referees and the horrible calls they made.
For game, can you be, I saw that game. I got a little vocal in that game.
And Thomas has continued on the tradition. They appreciate that. And we're both, we're channeling, uh, Coast Queen.
This, our students in VNN were challenged to create this video. Um, Ella Sweeney is not here, but she, oh, she's here, hey! Ella Sweeney is our rising senior. She's a junior right now, and she was the primary editor of this video.
This class has given me the opportunity to learn everything I can about broadcasting. And as, as an aspiring news anchor, I now am, am able to be versatile in running a soundboard, running the script, running a tracaster. This class has given me the opportunity to learn everything, and it's given me a group of friends that I can spend Friday nights with, filming the football games, and doing interviews all around the school.
I'm glad I took this class, because it's taught me a lot of things that I wouldn't have known if I didn't take it. Uh, I work with all of our cameras here, and before I started this class, like, I probably would have just, like, the only thing I would have known about a camera would be to pick it up and press the record button. But now I know, like, all these different things, and I'm out tracking the ball at the football games, and working at basketball games, and soccer games, and all these different things. And I think it's given me an idea of some things that I want to do in the future.
I'm glad I took it, because, um, I learned, like, valuable money managing skills.
In general, this has prepared me a lot for just sort of, um, budgeting, just looking at, uh, how to manage a lot of, all of the money that we can get. In the future, I think it can just sort of, uh, help me out with planning better. It's just, it would really go through a lot of, uh, numbers, just, you know, budgeting and control.
I'm glad I took personal finance, because it taught me skills that I could use outside of a formal education setting. Personal finance taught me a lot about how to manage my finances as a student and as an adult outside of college and outside of school as well.
I'm really glad I took this class, because I was really interested in, uh, sports broadcasting and really learning more about the field of marketing. Um, it's prepared me for the future, because I really want to major in this field in college and also pursue broadcasting for networks like ESPN, CBS.
Well, I'm happy I took this class, because I've always been interested in the sports broadcasting field. But I, and I took a tour of Alabama, I'm getting interested in marketing, but didn't really know how to get a start in looking into that field. And this class really gave me a chance to start looking into marketing, uh, especially sports-related. And now I'm actually going to be minoring in marketing Alabama, so I'm very excited.
I'm glad I chose to take this class, because it gives me, uh, critical thinking skills that I'm going to need for the future and, uh, for tough times ahead. Um, and I'm also glad, because I met a lot of people that I wouldn't have met if I didn't take this class freshman year.
I believe this class will help me a lot in the future, because of me practicing communication skills twenty-four seven, inside competition and outside competition, and throughout practice, we have to be able to compete, communicate with other teams, and be able to talk and work things out.
Computing is now part of everything we do. So no matter what career you end up pursuing, you'll likely have to use a computer to some extent. So it's good to go ahead and get a good foundation in it now while you're still in high school.
When I was a freshman, I had to quit soccer. And after that, I didn't really feel like I was a part of anything important anymore, until my sophomore year, when I found out about these classes and the health science program. And once I joined, I just finally felt like I was a part of something I was passionate about again. And it just made me feel really good about myself. And then this class has done so much for me. I've gotten, like, multiple certifications. I'm CPR certified, lifer certified, and I get to do things that I wouldn't be able to do were for this program, this class. So it's really prepared me, especially because I want to go into sports medicine, uh, after college. And we've had the opportunity to have internships through this class. So I've had hands-on experiences with physical therapists, um, and doctors at certain places, like Andrew Sports Medicine. And I've been able to experience the doctor and patient conversations, and x-rays, and ultrasounds, and, um, real-life experiences that I'll need for my future.
Well, one of the things I've been doing recently is I've been working on 3D printing cars. And, uh, this is actually one of the more fun projects I've done this class. It's a class-wide competition, see who can make the most efficient car. And I think this is one of the most enjoyable projects I've done in all of high school. So that's why I enjoy this class. The skill of 3D modeling is a very useful skill going forward. I think that even home-wise, unlike my own projects, I started to integrate the use of 3D modeling. And I know that in the future, and like, all, drafting is going to be replaced with 3D models.
This is really the only class in the day where I have the freedom to, to just do what I want to do. Like, other classes, I don't get to make stuff and be creative. But in this class, I can design pretty much anything I want on the computer and print it out and have a 3D model of it. So that's pretty cool. Well, we use a lot of the programs that are used in, like, the engineering and architecture fields. And that's a career path that I'm interested in. So it's good to be kind of well-versed in that stuff. And also, it just helps me think in the same way that, like, engineers do and visualize stuff better.
Good choice of cool kids is the song. Well, I guess that's, well, yeah. I'm like, for which is, are we at? Okay, got it. So, um, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters of commerce or trade. I want to remind all of us of the following: No action can be taken in executive session. There will be no vote taken in executive session. No, um, no minutes of the executive session will be made. Request that Dr. Todd Freeman and Mr. Pat Boone attend the executive session. Uh, estimate the executive session will last approximately thirty minutes. Following the executive session, the regular board meeting will reconvene. Mr. Vindal, can you comment on the motion for an executive session?
It's authorized by the statute of the Meeting Act.
Got it. Do I hear a motion for executive session? So, do I hear a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.